March 11th at the 6:32 PM. Could you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag. The which stands one nation.
Thank you, everybody. Chelsea, could you please take roll call and council members, please identify your location for the meeting tonight?
Member Baranski.
President Frazier, Michigan.
Member Blanky. Member Carnegie.
President City Hall.
Member Colka.
President Frazier, Michigan.
Member Lessig.
President Frazier, Michigan.
Member Shornak. Member Winawiki.
President Frazier, Michigan.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda unless there's any amendments at this time. Councilwoman Amy Baranski.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Any comments or questions on that motion? Chelsea, could you please take a roll call?
Member Baranski.
Yes.
Member Blanky. Mayor Carnegie.
Yes.
Member Colka.
Yes.
Member Lessig.
Yes.
Member Shornak.
Yes.
Member Winawiki.
Yes.
Great, thank you all. Item five, citizen participation on agenda items. If there's anybody in the waiting room who would like to identify themselves, it's just an agenda item only at this time, please make yourself known. I see none on my screen, Dave. Okay, we see none, so I'll call it back to the chair. Item six, consent agenda. Mayor Proton, Winawiki.
Having heard no callouts, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as submitted. Any comments or questions on that motion? I see none. Chelsea, could you please call a vote?
Member Baranski.
Yes.
Member Blanky.
Yes.
Mayor Carnegie.
Yes.
Member Colka.
Yes.
Member Lessig.
Yes.
Member Shornak.
Yes.
Member Winawiki.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, thank you. Item seven, request for council action. Item A, the appointment of Department of Public Works Mark Ragsdale. Mr. Thompson, did you want to start with this or is this Amy Sell?
Actually, Mr. Mayor, just for this item and the next, council will recall that the last meeting where we discussed this direction was given to.
He froze up.
Yeah, we see it.
We're all waiting, anticipated.
Okay, Mr. Thompson, would you like to try again?
Um, oh my.
You froze up, so we didn't hear any of it.
It was very eloquent, I would think. I'll try and repeat that. At the last, at the last meeting, we talked about moving both candidates, Ragsdale and Nayland, forward in the process. And we have done that. Mrs. Sell has really been shepherding that through and she's better able to speak to it than I in terms of the specifics. I would say, though, that I invited Mr. Nayland to attend a meeting that I had with John Walters today to do some budget preparatory work, so he spent a couple of hours in my office this afternoon going through some details of the budget and some of our accounting. So he is, while not on board, he is being educated about our systems here and it was a very productive afternoon. Amy, can you describe where we are in terms of what's occurred recently in the process?
Yes, so we have been moving forward with both candidates based on the direction from council. Both Vince and Mark have been engaged and have been meeting with the staffs and getting to know some of the opportunities and personnel at Frazier. Thus, I would like to, and we've been looking at a variety of market data in terms of compensation and different considerations that need to be considered when looking at making a recommendation on next steps. Two key things, the job descriptions have been drafted, but we are in an overall process of reviewing them. And I haven't presented a full package of job descriptions for review that's in process. Another element of human resources that is in process is the Personnel Policy Manual that will have a few, could have some, you know, changes and implications on, for instance, holidays and other aspects that will also be, is in process and will be coming back to council. But given that, we've been moving forward with preparing conditional offer letters. This is a little bit of a departure from what has been done in the past. I am recommending that instead of employment contracts, that we have offer letters to administrative positions. This is an at-will situation where we lay out key terms such as salary, defined contribution plans for retirement, which is different from a pension. We outline kind of high-level benefit options, but then the role is to be an at-will employee, which can be terminated at any time for any reason or for no reason by the city or the employees. So to that effect, we are reckon, I am recommending conditional offer letters for both candidates. They are subject to, they're conditional based on the successful completion of a drug test and physical. And key terms of these off, I've been working very closely and appreciate Don Denault's support as always for reviewing the offer letters and terminology. Key terms that I want to make sure that council is aware of is the base salary on an annualized basis, which would be $110,000. I know that this is more than has been paid for positions in the past. However, based on the current market data and the qualifications and expectations that I know I have for these candidates and the contribution that they'll be making to Frazier, it is my recommendation to be at that salary level.
For both of them, Amy?
For both of them.
Okay, thank you.
There are other key components are, to note, are that they will not be a part of the pension plan. So there would not be a defined benefit program, but for the retirement, there would be a defined contribution where the city would be making an 8% contribution. Other healthcare and benefits would be similar to other Frazier employees. I'm recommending four weeks of vacation. When it comes to sick leave and short-term disability, that's, those are areas that are currently under review in the Personnel Policy and that I'll be coming back to council with recommendations on. Other perks include a cell phone and laptop computer that would be provided by the company, by the city for business, city business. There is not a car allowance or a company vehicle as well, and there is, again, no severance agreement. It is just an at-will employment arrangement. So that is kind of a summary of my recommendation.
Okay, thank you, Amy. Councilwoman Baranski.
I'd like to make a motion to extend conditional offer letters to, I'll do them separately, just, I think they'll be fine, but to Mark Ragsdale as the Department of Public Works Director with the terms outlined by Amy Sell.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for Mr. Ragsdale as the Department of Public Works Director. Any comments or questions on that motion? Councilman Lessig.
Yes, this directed to Ms. Sell, if that's okay?
Sure.
So we are, are we approving a conditional offer letter or are we accepting a conditional offer letter that we haven't received yet or? Because I would have, I would have thought that would have come before the meeting so that we'd have something in our hands to, to look at, so.
My recommendation is to move forward with a conditional offer letter. I have prepared one and it has been just as of today, had some updates based on the feedback from our attorneys.
Okay, but we don't, we don't, just so that everyone's aware, the council does not have those conditional offers. We are taking what's, what's been said here regarding, and then your sick leave and what was the other thing under review in the?
Sick leave and short-term disability are two areas that have not been determined. They are part of, they need further review, which will be part of the Personnel Policy Manual, which I'll be coming back to council with recommendations on sick leave and short-term disability.
Okay, would that be specific to these two candidates or would that be specific to all administrative?
All.
What is the, what is the point? What, yeah, so it's all administrative, non-union employee?
Correct.
Okay. All right, those are the questions I have about that. I'm concerned that we don't have something in hand that says this is what we, we, we've gotten bullet point notes up to now, but no specifics. So that's a bit frustrating. And then could I talk to Mr., ask Mr. Ragsdale a question, please?
Yeah, you're probably going to ask him the same question I was, but go ahead, Mike.
Well, why don't you go ahead first?
No, go ahead. You've got the floor, go ahead.
Okay, well, Mr. Ragsdale, good to see you.
Nice to see you.
And I just want, I just wanted to make clear something. Are you, and this may be a little bit uncomfortable, but I think it needs to be on the, on the table. Are you currently a plaintiff in a lawsuit against the city of E-course?
I am.
Okay, and that lawsuit was recently filed, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. My concerns are, and this simply is for my tenure, we've had several lawsuits, so in the city over the past few years, and I'm a bit risk averse to adding more lawsuit discussions and things like that to our agenda, and this comes from another city. If you are hired here and you are, become the DPW superintendent, I assume that other lawsuits will take up some of your time and could be a distraction. How would you handle that?
So the lawsuit would not take up any of my, any of my time that I would be devoting to the citizens of Frazier. If for some reason I had to, say, attend court or something of that nature, then I would use a vacation time.
Okay, and I don't know when the vacation time would start, so I'm, I'm just want to make sure we're, we're, we're clear on, on how this would work. And I have one other question, and I apologize, I have a bit of a, but I'll, I'll pass. Thank you. I appreciate the answer.
You're welcome. And, and I appreciate the, the time that the individual council members have given me to conduct the interviews. Appreciate the time that Amy and, and Mr. Thompson have spent with, with me. I really enjoyed meeting the staff and seeing the operation firsthand. And I look, most importantly, I look forward to serving the residents for the city of Frazier.
I do remember my last question, and it's just to make sure that I understand. Does the lawsuit, does any part of the lawsuit have you seeking to retain your position at E-course or are you essentially, once you would come to Frazier, you are putting the employment at E-course in the, in the rearview mirror, so to speak?
It will be so far behind me, I wouldn't be able to see it no matter which way I looked.
Okay, all right, thank you, appreciate it.
That's why the rearview mirror is a lot smaller than the front window.
Uh, anybody else? I just want to ask, oh, go ahead, Don.
Just when we're ready, I just wanted to maybe adjust the motion a little bit, the language of it. First of all, I'd like it to reflect that the position in question is superintendent of the Department of Public Works. I would propose, just because of the specificity involved, a motion that reads something like this. I move to authorize the interim city manager to extend a conditional offer of employment with the terms as summarized by Amy Sell to Mr., and then it'll be Ragsdale in this case, or Mr. Nayland, after final approval of the offer letter by the city attorney. That way, that way it covers final review of that letter before it goes out, make sure it matches up everything that's said here tonight, and authorizes the city manager to extend that letter under the conditions and terms summarized by Amy here this evening.
I will amend my motion so long as you agree to give Chelsea that language separately.
Will do.
I still second.
Well, thank you, Don, that's why we pay you the big bucks.
Yeah.
Mr. Ragsdale, I just wanted to ask, were, with what Ms. Sell has said, the conditional offers, and are you satisfied with the process that you've been through? And the offers as she has stated are satisfied to your satisfaction at this time?
Yes, I am.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other questions from council? Councilwoman Blanky.
Thank you. Mr. Denault, I think what you were doing was clarifying that. Mark, hi, Mark.
Hi.
The title, the title would officially be superintendent of the DPW, correct? Not director?
Correct. The term director is very common, but the charter refers to it as superintendent.
Right, thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else at this time? I see none. Chelsea, could you please call a vote?
Member Baranski.
Yes.
Member Blanky.
Yes.
Mayor Carnegie.
Yes.
Member Colka.
Yes.
Member Lessig.
For reasons previously stated, no.
Member Shornak.
Yes.
Member Winawiki.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
Welcome.
Congratulations, Burke. Welcome aboard.
Welcome aboard, Mark. Look forward to being here.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. This is Vincent Nayland, and I echo Mr. Ragsdale's sentiment. I appreciate the confidence that the council has, has given me and put in me, and I am really looking forward to, to joining the city of Frazier's team and, and working with Mr. Thompson. So thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Well, thank you, Vincent. Councilwoman Amy Baranski.
Yes, I would like to make a motion, the same motion that Mr. Denault proposed with, language-wise, substituting in Mr. Nayland, who would be the Finance Director, Assistant City Manager. I'm not sure what the title is, whatever the legal title is under the charter. Same motion for Mr. Nayland.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions from council?
Don has his hand up.
Yeah, I know.
Oh, okay.
I just want to hear counsel first, just in case he has to change something.
Well, he does.
I'm, I'm looking at the, the agenda when I say the words.
So let me just ask a question first. Vincent, same question to you. I just want to be sure that you're satisfied with the process that we're doing at Frazier and that you agree with the conditional offers that have been set forth at this time.
Absolutely. From what I've heard tonight, I am, I am good with the terms and the conditions that were set for.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, wouldn't, I wouldn't raise my hand if I wasn't going to change something, right? It's pretty rare otherwise. The only thing I'd like to note, as Ms. Baranski pointed out in the motion, I think that the formal title is still being finalized. It is an Assistant City Manager slash Finance Director position. Both, only the Assistant City Manager position is defined by city ordinance. There is no definition of Finance Director in the city code. We do have a city treasurer under the city charter, which encompasses Finance Director. So I'm going to be working with administration to make sure that we finalize that terminology, and if we need an ordinance amendment, we'll get to that as well, but we want to make sure we get the title exactly right.
And obviously, that'd be on the, the offers formally, correct?
Correct.
Yep, okay, I'm good with that. Councilwoman Blanky.
Thank you, Vince. I, I'm glad to hear that you're very pleased with what's been said and what's been offered, and I'm glad to hear you came in to circle around what, the hard work of Mr. Thompson and what he is attempting to do with this position. This is quite a position, and I'm really excited to see how this works. And I happen to believe that you are the perfect pick for this position. I think you're going to be very flexible. I think you have the knowledge and the life experience and that you will fit in with our community very well. So you're like Captain America, you know, you're, you're you're a project that they made, you know, and so I'm kind of excited to see how this all comes together, and I welcome you for part of this process. Thanks, Vince.
Thank you so very much, Council Blanky, and it's, it's, I'm very excited about it, and so I want you all to know that. I'm looking forward to coming in and doing my very best to make a difference there. And I'm just, I'm, I'm really happy and, and looking forward to it. I think that my attitude, coming in with a positive attitude and a can-do spirit, you're, so you'd be surprised at what you can overcome and what you can do and put in place when you've got, when you've got the right mindset. I think I do have that, and I'm glad that that came forth or forth when, you know, talking to you, you all, you know, I'm glad that you see that in me. So I'm very happy. I think it's a good match for us all. I think that it will result in a beneficial relationship. Thank you.
And if I could, I wanted to thank also, I thank Mr. Thompson, of course, are my colleagues, but I thank you, Amy Sell, for your vision with this position, and I'm very grateful for it, and I'm real excited to see how it unfolds. So thank you, Amy.
Mr. Mayor. Yes. Yeah, I'd like to speak to Mr. Nayland for a second.
Oh, so go ahead, Mike, I didn't see your hand, sorry.
Sorry, it's hard on a Zoom meeting.
Okay.
Mr. Nayland, good to see you here tonight, and I think this position is going to be a challenge for you. I think it's a challenge for anyone. It is a new hybrid position, and with Ms. Sell coming up with the job description, I look forward to that very soon. And I, you believe you're ready for a four-in-one job with multiple hats and a big learning curve?
Absolutely. I wouldn't be coming on board or I wouldn't have spent the time going through this process if, if I wasn't. As I stated before, I like the, I actually like the diversity that this position offers. When I saw the job description and noticed that it encompassed different roles and functions, so not just finance, but IT as well as the, the parks and recreation, even senior services. And finance and accounting, that's a, that's a big job alone, you know, when you're running a financial department. So I'm prepared for that. I believe that my executive experience, 16 years working at the executive level, that's about working with the team and what it's about is strategy. And I've worked with the Board of Directors at that level with all things finance, and I've worked with the executive teams over almost two decades. So that's really what this position is about. It's coming in as an Assistant City Manager. You're working at an executive level. I'm partnering with Mr. Thompson. I'll be partnering with Mr. Ragsdale and the, the various functions and other departments of the city to move the city forward. And that's, that's really, that's really what an executive does, and not only that, but generating the ideas, coming up with, with strategies, coming up with plans, initiatives that I can draw from, you know, with my own experience from where I come from. So without a shadow of a doubt, I'm ready to go.
Okay, well, thank you very much, and should your, should the vote here be successful, I look forward to working with you in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilless.
Is there anybody out this time?
So I would, I would just like to chime in and say.
Hold on, Mark. Mayor Proton, Winawiki.
Yeah, I just wanted to say I admire the enthusiasm and the passion that both of you, Mark and Vince, are coming into this city with. We've been faced with a lot of unique challenges, and Vince, you definitely have probably the bigger challenge. And, and we're all very excited to see what you're going to do with that whole blank canvas and that whole color palette of paints and brushes and all the tools that we're going to give you.
Thank you. You'd be surprised with what you can do when you've got a myriad of colors in front of you. So I'm excited to go. I like to think that I'm a person that thinks on their feet, and I take the situations as they come. So you have, you've got, and that's, that's any organization where you step into a role, you've got challenges. You've got events, you've got things happening, and you've got to be a great problem solver. I think that I've got those skills, and I think that I'm resourceful. And so with that, you know, I'm, I'm prepared to go. I don't know all of the challenges that are facing the city, obviously, today, but I will, and I can promise you that I will be prepared to address them.
Great. Well, I just want to add, Vincent, I, I know with the right attitude and work ethic, by experience that I've done, I know you can wear multiple hats, do multiple things in this city and get the job done correctly, so I'm a big fan and I, I wish you success in this if it goes through, and I'm looking forward to working with you also.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that.
Anybody else at this time? Mr. Ragsdale, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to chime in. Vincent mentioned his relationship with working with the Board of Directors. I've had the pleasure to be on the Board of Directors at the credit union that Mr. Nayland worked at for many years, and I can't even begin to tell you the amount of hard work and dedication the man had put in to the credit union and how impressed we were with the job that he performed. So I'm very excited to actually get a chance to work with Mr. Nayland again.
Great, thank you. Okay, I believe, I believe we have a motion. I apologize, I didn't realize if we had a second at this time.
Suzanne, a second.
Okay, okay, so we do have a motion and a second, thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Do we go out to citizen participation anymore?
We do at the end of the meeting. We had one earlier.
Okay.
And we have one at the end, Mike. Ms. Chelsea, could you please call a vote?
Member Baranski.
Yes.
Member Blanky.
Yes.
Mayor Carnegie.
Yes.
Member Colka.
Absolutely.
Member Lessig.
Yes.
Member Shornak.
Yes.
Member Winawiki.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, motion carries. Congratulations, Vincent. We look forward to seeing you. Councilwoman Shornak.
Yeah, I just want to say something that may not be popular, but I'm going to say it anyway. In my life experience, I can tell you that do not base anything on a title. Titles mean nothing. It is what you do with a title that makes it impressive or makes people want to follow you or makes people want to be in your vicinity. Titles mean nothing if you don't do the right things with them. So, because I, a couple of times, people mention titles, and it just has always been a pet peeve of mine, and I just wanted to put that out there, whether it's popular or not. Just remember, a title is only as good as what you do with it. That's all. Thanks.
Councilwoman Suzanne Colka.
Thank you. I'll be very brief because I don't want to beat a dead horse, but I am very excited that Mark and Vince are coming aboard. I'm, I can't even explain this, the angst that, that me personally has been through in the last year, and it's so exciting to see us moving in a positive direction and with lots of positivity, and that is, I, I'm just very excited. It's, it's been a very rough year. We've done a lot of things given COVID, and I'm really excited that we've been able to accomplish that as a team, and that's been really great. So welcome aboard, Vince, and welcome aboard, Mark. And that's been really great. So welcome aboard, Vince, and welcome aboard, Mark. And I, we are here for you at your disposal if you need us for any reason whatsoever.
Yep. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it so much.
Okay, item 7B, the extension of states, I'm sorry, the city of emergency through April 8th, 2021. I'm hoping this might be the last month for us, but it's still recommended that we follow the county protocol for this just in case other funds do come available. And anything that comes forward, you know, after this Recovery Act too. So, so with that, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we extend the city of Frazier's emergency through April 8th, 2021 due to COVID-19.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Councilwoman Suzanne Colka.
Yeah, I just have a comment just for the residents, just so that they understand why we continue to do this, Mayor. And I know you kind of touched on it, but for the most part, at least from my perspective, my understanding is, is we're doing this because if there is money available, we want to make sure that we, we are part of that process and that we're not getting overlooked. And we just, we actually just had something like that happen where there was, there's a ton of federal money that's coming and is being dispersed amongst all of the cities. I think we're supposed to get like $1.4 million. I know the city of Detroit is getting like an astronomical amount of money. But in other words, this is why we're continuing to extend it, not because of anything else, really.
That is correct. Actually, the, I believe the state of Michigan is receiving $10 billion. So I don't know if any of that $10 billion will trickle down to the cities also, but who knows? So, Mayor Proton, Winawicki.
Yeah, and just, just to, again, tailgate a little bit on, on Councilwoman Calca's comments. Just so the residents understand, we have been doing this ever since the beginning. And we've been extending this. This is not something that we're just adopting right now. We've been doing this all along. That's, that's just a point of clarity for the residents out there.
Anybody else? Okay, we do have a motion and a second. Chelsea, could you please take a vote?
Member Baranski?
Yes.
Member Blanke?
Yes.
Mayor Carnegie?
Yes.
Member Colka?
Yes.
Member Lossage?
No.
Member Shornak?
Yes, but I look forward to when I can say no.
Member Winawicki?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Item 2, interim city manager's contract. Mr. Thompson and I have been sitting down over the last couple of months and just going over a bunch of things. So, Mr. Thompson, do you want to take the floor, or is this something for Don to address at this time?
I'm, I'm, I think Mr. Denault probably will carry the ball on this. But just echo what you've said, Mr. Mayor, we've, we've talked about it two or three times and trying, I guess, to put pieces together in a more formal fashion than, than our discussions. And I've had some discussions in the last couple of days, some communications and some discussions with Mr. Denault. Don, do you want to kind of report from the city side of the negotiations?
Certainly. Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Thompson is accurate in explaining that he has been formulating in his own mind what he would like to see as far as a continued relationship with the city. I can tell you that he's great to work with, and it's been, it's been an excellent relationship. He is asking only for some minor adjustments to the existing agreements, which is why it wasn't ready for us, I believe, last month. I have looked those over. I don't have any legal objection to them. They are policy decisions for you as council to make. If you are comfortable making those modifications for him, then the only remaining question for you as a council tonight is how long would you like the extension to be for? The current proposal before you, I believe, is for 90 days, which is three months, which really, depending on whether it starts at the expiration of the last one, which was February 20th, or whether we start it tonight, three months is a very short window of time in the government world of time. You know, government moves slowly, and we meet once a month. I have spoken with him about whether or not he would be open to longer than that, and he has expressed that he would be. So I really, we really leave it to council to give us direction tonight. If the council would like to extend his, his agreement, is council comfortable with a certain time period? Mr. Thompson has asked, and I think it's very reasonable, that whatever the agreement timeframe be, both sides have a 30-day clause to allow for termination. So we could agree to two years, but you know, if, if his time is done because we have a new city manager and he's, he's helped to acclimate them, and everybody's comfortable ending the relationship, he could exercise the 30 days. City council could exercise it. So the timeframe itself only matters from the standpoint of whether or not we have to come back and see you all again in three months, or four months, or six months to renew or extend further. I believe you're privy to the changes that have been requested. They are minor. The one change, as I recall, is a $40 per day increase, probably in part, I would guess, without asking him, due to the long travel times and the long days.
And gas prices going up.
And gas prices going up a little bit, yes. The other request was that we modify that lodging provision that we had in there that was basically designed to reimburse him for, I believe, three stays locally if there were a state of emergency, a blizzard, a late-night meeting, some reason he had to be on site early the next morning because of a sewer or some other issue that needed to be supervised. He's asked that we modify that so that there be no limitations on it. However, with the understanding that, you know, there's an expectation that it won't be abused. I have suggested that if we do modify it to that request, that he stay within a 10-mile limit of the city. That way, it couldn't be abused by, you know, staying somewhere in Ohio or anywhere else. But certainly, there's no expectation that it would be abused. And in fact, with the winter knock on wood behind us, we would hope that there won't be any blizzard conditions or any other reason for him to be stuck, not being able to get home each night. Any other terms? I believe that was it, Mr. Thompson. If I'm missing one, please feel free to speak up. But those are the changes, and then, then it was the, the duration, I believe.
I think that's correct.
So I will open up the floor. Mayor Proton, Winawicki, you're first.
Yeah, I don't believe that there's been any overnight stays that, that we've incurred thus far. So I'm, I'm not adverse to the, to agreeing to that, so.
I've actually asked Mr. Thompson to spend the night for his own well-being, but he's actually just gone home. So he has not taken one night out at this time. Councilwoman Blanke.
Thank you. I agree completely with what Don just said. As far as a 90-day or three-month window is a small window in government. We just hired two new individuals to take over departments. I feel that we are headed in a definite good direction. I think it would be a mistake. Not, my suggestion would be, if this is what you want to open discussion for, I would suggest, my recommendation would be a six-month window. And when we talked about that $40 a day, Mr. Thompson had different ideas, you know, because of the longevity, the ride and everything. But then what the mayor just said is very true, too. Mr. Thompson hasn't taken advantage of anything, a minute, an hour, a stay, whatever. I think he's done a wonderful job, and I would suggest, along with the six months, I would suggest a $75 increase instead of 40 to cover his mileage, because it'll be up to probably $8 in six months anyway. So that's just my suggestion. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm just curious. Not that I have any reservations about extending Mr. Thompson's contract, I don't. My question is for Amy Sell. What time window are you looking at as far as thinking that you will have a city manager in place? Because as much as I, I really appreciate Mr. Thompson and do think he's a fabulous city manager, I'm just curious because I don't want to do too much overlap. So, Amy?
Yeah, great question. My plan is to get kind of agreement from council tonight to launch the search. My expectation would be to be able to present candidates around April 22nd. Council to determine finalists around April 29th. Interviews on May 6th with a possible decision of April, of May 13th. So given that and the up-to-a-month transition, my expectation and hope would be to have someone onboard in June so that a transition could occur after that. So having a little bit of overlap in the month of June would be my best guess at this point.
So do you feel that four months would be adequate?
Yes.
Okay. And again, Mr. Thompson, this is nothing against you whatsoever. I just want you to know that. I really do like you.
I would just like to go on record of saying I'd like to have Mrs. Blanke negotiate on my behalf.
I've been told that, Mark.
Councilwoman Baranski.
Um, yes, in follow-up to that, Amy Sell, we have a couple of other positions that we obviously need to fill, coupled with the city manager, one of them being, unfortunately, the city clerk. Will your time, and all of which have equal, you know, equally important timeframes, will your timeframe for the city manager be at all hindered as a result of the city clerk search? Okay.
So, and I can comment more on the city clerk search now.
We'll do that after. We'll do that later. Yeah. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that you're, you adjusted for that. So at that point, then, I'd like to make a motion to extend the, the contract for an additional four months with the terms as outlined today.
We have a motion. Councilman Lossage.
Mr. Winawicki's second, and then I'll talk.
Okay, but I did see that, but I called on you first, but.
That's, that's fine. The motion seconded. That's what I want to make sure that was recorded.
Well, I wanted to comment before it was seconded, so that's why I did it that way.
Well, you're the mayor. You, you can interrupt anybody. Well, I'll just go ahead. And so four months from what date? Are we going from February? Or are we going from March?
I'm going from today, four months from today.
So that'd be March, April, May, June. That would be four months. So what do we do about the period from February 20th through today? Is that at the old rate, the new rate? Just trying to nail down the specifics so there's no ambiguity.
Well, it would be at the old rate since there's no contract changing the rate, but that would be my legal hat. And I think that's what we paid him. I mean, he's been paid up to today. It's not like he's waiting for a paycheck, I don't think. But I guess I defer to Don.
Well, and, and I think, I think we, I'll speak for myself. I would like to have all, have things, have continuity in these things. I'm not thrilled that we went a month without a contract or in agreement with Mr. Thompson on paper. And we have talked about that in the past with other agreements. But I do, just want to make sure that as we go forward, we're, we're always tightening these, tightening these things up. Not sure if this is the appropriate time, but are we going to be making a motion or taking some action to direct Amy Sell during this meeting to move forward with the city manager's search?
I believe she said that she was going to request that.
Okay, but it's not on the agenda presently, so.
No, it is not.
Okay. And then I would, okay, I'll wait, I'll hold off my comments on that part till then. Thank you.
My only comment was going to be is I would just like to extend it to six months so we don't have to come back and forth, because I know how things work. Things have always taken an extra month or two. And to do this again would just take extra time. And it's with the 30-day clause, I don't think an extra month or two really makes that much of a difference. But it just makes it easier. Just my thoughts.
I did it purposely four months to keep the pressure on, because I do not like how slowly the wheels of government work. And not that I want to get rid of Mr. Thompson, but I want to make sure that we keep moving forward. And I'm, and I'm definitely frustrated that it's taking us this long to do some things. So that was my thought process for why I went with four months, because otherwise I was going to do six, Mike.
Nope, I understand totally. Believe me, I really do.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Blanke, while we do, go ahead.
No, I don't want to interrupt.
No, go ahead.
Okay, then I'll interrupt. Thank you. Councilwoman Baranski, you know, I agree with you, and we've had many discussions. And you, you have to really work in government to appreciate how slow they really do work. But the reality of it is, like Councilwoman Colka said earlier, she's so pleased, you know, for the first time in a long time, there's a peacefulness here. Everything's kind of collectively going together. We still, even though six months, and I was grateful to hear that the mayor saw the logic in my thought. And I just feel that it gives us a time to do this, will do it correctly, but to do it with a peacefulness, with a non-rush type of a situation. I mean, Amy still has to, again, going back to the clerk, are, are we still going to hire Amy, an assistant in the DPW?
Yes, that is the plan to hire an assistant director, or assistant superintendent for DPW.
Okay, then we're going to hire a finance slash recreation clerk, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we still have a lot of major, not major, but we have a number of positions to be filled. I think for the first time in many, many years, we found a good formula here, working together between Mr. Thompson and Amy and all of us. And I just don't see, you know, even if we brought on a city manager, I'm not saying to forego that, you know, and just block that. They could work together. We could have such a super smooth transition, a knowledgeable transition, where we would continue on this road. So that's, that, I'm just going to reiterate that. That's all. I, whatever you decide will be fine.
Councilwoman Colka.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of things. The first is I echo Councilmember Blanke's position on this. I do think that six months is probably more appropriate, given the circumstances. I don't want this to be rushed, and I do think that since we've brought Amy Sell on, although her plate has been incredibly full, and so has Mr. Thompson's, they have moved very fast, given the amount of work they have had to pile through. So I don't think, and, and I can appreciate that for sure, because we definitely want to keep things moving. But I don't, this is like the most important piece of the puzzle, and I definitely don't want it to be rushed through. And I agree that there should be a transition period. If in fact, we're able to get to that point by June, which would be fantastic. But I, I would agree with the mayor and with Councilwoman Blanke. Thank you.
Councilwoman Baranski.
Yeah, two things. One, it's not like we can't extend it in four months, first of all. But second of all, I don't want our city manager to not have a say in, our permanent city manager to not have a say in some of the positions, perhaps the assistants, and, and he or she is going to be a key part in keeping us moving forward. So I would love to have Mark for forever. I really would. It's, it's been amazing. I don't think he's going to want to drive back and forth, and I have a feeling he doesn't want to move to Michigan, and I don't blame him. So it's time to keep it moving forward. So I'm going to stick with my motion at four months. And if, you know, if we need to renew it or extend it, obviously, lots has changed, lots have happened. We've had to hire for positions we haven't anticipated. We haven't yet hired for positions we know we want to hire for. It's okay. It's a, it's a work in progress. So I guess I'll call the vote, and we can always try something else if the majority disagree with four months.
So, Mr. Proton Winawicki, I believe you were going to second that. Do you second it?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Chelsea, could you please call a vote?
Member Baranski?
Yes.
Member Blanke?
No.
Mayor Carnegie?
No.
Member Colka?
No.
Member Lossage?
Yes.
Member Shornak?
Yes.
Member Winawicki?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you all.
Excuse me, Mayor?
Yes.
Excuse me, did we decide on an additional fee per diem for Mr.?
Yeah.
Pardon? Pardon?
What do you ask for?
See, you should have talked to me before, Mark. What were you thinking? Okay, thank you. Thank you.
In four months, I'll, I'll talk with you.
Okay.
Take care.
That's a one time, that's a one time deal right now. That, that's it. Off the table.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, in four months, he's not going to want to talk to be on a meeting then. Um, okay.
Mayor, Mayor, uh, Don Denal does his hand up.
Go ahead, Mr. Denal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just wanted to, um, to make a note for the record. I have been working on the draft of the extension agreement. And to Mr. Lessig's point, which is very well taken, I have already accounted for and built into the, the language, the recitals of that agreement, the fact that it did lapse and we carried on on a day-to-day relationship, uh, pending this outcome. So it is for continuity's sake at least, there will be a historic record, historical record built into the document indicating where we've been and where we're going. So the only term I have to change after this is the term, uh, the four months. And we'll get that executed. Same process as last time. Mr. Mayor, I will ask that you and the clerk, the acting city clerk, sign on behalf of the city and Mr. Thompson would sign on his own.
Yes, and I believe that Mr. Thompson, I did kind of brush that, but he was, uh, good until we settled on a new contract, so, um.
I'll put you down. He's on top of it.
Okay. Item C, Authorization of Capital Improvement Projects, Engineering Only. Item A is Sanitary Sewers. I believe, uh, this will be, um, Mr. Thompson and Mr. Vigron.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've, we've, uh, talked about this briefly, uh, before, a little bit, uh, last week when we talked about capital improvements, uh, and in fact, both of these topics. Uh, and this is a little bit different approach than we've taken in the past. This is authorization for the engineering piece of the project. As I understand it, in the past, council sort of authorized the entire project, which would be engineering and construction. Uh, this is a, a, a little bit different approach, as I said. So what we're asking for here is authorization to proceed with engineering on these two projects. Uh, with, uh, uh, construction to, to come, uh, a little bit later, uh, in a separate, uh, authorization. And we've provided background information, uh, uh, for you on, on both projects. So, um, uh, if, if council is so inclined, w- we'd like to proceed. The sanitary sewer project, uh, really is, uh, something I think sanitary sewers are very exciting. It's something that communities should be proud of because it's the kind of thing that needs to be done on a, on a routine basis and most communities frankly do not do it. Uh, so in that regard, uh, uh, we're, we're, we're doing the right thing and, and many communities, uh, don't do this. So this, this is keeping our sanitary sewer system, which is a critical infrastructure, uh, keeping it up, you know, up to speed, so to speak. Um, street preservation, uh, is similar in nature, although we all recognize that, um, we've got some ground to make up in the street, uh, the street preservation business. Anyway, we're looking for authorization here to proceed with sort of the first step on both of these projects.
Thank you. Um, Mike, did you want to ask some, add something first or listen to council?
Uh, nothing really to add. Um, I'll, uh, hear friend questions.
Okay. Uh, Mayor Proton Winawicki.
So kind of a multiple part question with several people involved. First, Amy, um, Sell, uh, bringing Mr. Ragsdale onboard, approximately how long do you think it's going to take for these final steps now that we've, we've approved moving forward?
Well, I think Mark's plan is to start April twelfth to provide thirty days' notice.
Okay. And moving quickly to Mike Vigron, um, when would the engineering surveys or studies start?
Uh, we would start tomorrow if approved tonight.
And approximately, what is the duration?
Uh, I would say the, um, the sanitary sewer part of it, uh, we would probably have, uh, within thirty days, the, um, uh, recommendation for a contract extension, uh, to city council with, with those final numbers, um, for, uh, approval. Uh, the road preservation program, um, we would probably be looking more like, uh, May or possibly June for a recommendation of award, uh, that would allow for some time to, um, finalize the scope of the project, prepare contract documents, uh, issue an advertisement for bids, uh, receive bids and prepare a recommendation for construction contract award.
Okay. And finally for Mark Thompson, um, is your plan, uh, if, if, if we approve these both tonight, is your plan to, um, actively engage, uh, Mr. Ragsdale in, in both of these processes?
Absolutely. Uh, I, handoff would probably be a, a better term, uh, but that, yes, that would be my, uh, I'm looking forward to that opportunity.
Okay. Thank you.
If, if I can piggyback your question, David, I, I thought you were going to another direction too, which I thought sparked my idea, but is this something that at this point, is it worth us waiting to Mr. Ragsdale onboard to follow this whole thing through from the beginning and maybe he's got ideas, suggestions, um, you know, to, to start off with, with him right away who's so involved with this stuff? Is it worth our time to do that?
Just, Mr. Mayor, I might address that, uh, and we'll get Mr. Ragsdale involved immediately. These are both relatively straightforward, um, straightforward kinds of projects and, um, and, and they're relatively simple and they're relatively low cost. Uh, Mr. Ragsdale certainly will be involved, uh, uh, by the time, uh, we're ready to actually do the, the building part of these projects, he'll be here. So.
Okay.
Uh, and picking up on earlier conversations about government going slowly, we probably should have had this in front of you two months ago. Um, uh, there's still aim to get both of these projects done. Certainly the sewer project's up to the weather sensitive. The other one is a little bit, so, um, I, I would suggest we keep it, keep, keep them moving, you know, um, but i- if it's the council's decision to wait, we can certainly do that. These are, these are relatively straightforward, pretty simple.
Okay, I just wanted to ask. Councilman Shornak.
Well, basically, both of you hit on what I was going to say. I was going to say, um, can this wait until Mr. Ragsdale is here? Uh, cause I, I like some of his thought processes and now how he handles things and I, I want to see, like, this would be his first big project and I would really like to see, um, how that would work out for, as far as the city goes. So I don't know what the time constraints are. I, I did hear you say, you know, we should have had this two months ago. But what is the overall effect on the city if we waited, uh, another thirty to forty-five days? Is it, you know, detrimental? Is it just, you know, a yearly update kind of thing? That's kind of what I wanted to know.
Uh, let me try and answer that. Mr. Vigron couldn't, can fill in if I, if I, uh, misstep somewhere. In terms of the sanitary sewer project, that project, I think from a timing standpoint, can occur, uh, it, it's not particularly weather dependent. Uh, you wouldn't want to do this work in a blizzard, but, but it can be done, uh, uh, at, uh, virtually any time. So if we want to put that, uh, back, uh, that's, you know, that isn't going to make a whole lot of difference. Um, uh, the street preservation, that does have some weather sensitivity to it and, and we'd like to do that, uh, uh, in the, in the summer months. I, I think, uh, those projects, uh, are more successful in, in the warm weather. And there's probably, uh, thirty to sixty days, uh, before we would be ready to get that out to bid. So, uh, certainly we can wait and I suspect, uh, the sanitary sewer project won't make any difference. The street project, uh, it might. But, uh, and again, I, I would say to you, these are both relatively simple projects.
And as mentioned, these are just engineerings at this time. We're not breaking any ground or no works being done at this time.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Right. Okay.
But it's, it's up to council, sir.
Sure. Uh, Mayor Proton Winawicki.
Yeah, to, again, kind of piggyback on your last comment, these are, these are strictly engineering, uh, studies at this point and Mr. Ragsdale will be involved. My fear is that if we wait for another thirty days to approve these, that also extends the engineering time and also extends the bidding time and also takes away from the weather time. And, um, we all know that if we wait on, and we've learned this in the past, if we wait, uh, too much later in the year, we're going to start to lose good competent bidders and good pricing. So being that these are just strictly engineering studies and we're not breaking ground, Mr. Ragsdale will be onboard on, uh, on the ground, boots on the ground, playing in the sandbox with, with everyone else prior to the end of these studies, um, you know, he would still have time to, to put some valuable input into it.
Yep, I agree. So did you want to make a motion, Mr. Proton? Mr. Lessig?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to authorize Anderson, Eckstein and
Westrick.
Westrick, sorry, uh, to proceed with engineering service for, for capital improvement projects in sanitary sewers and street preservation.
Second.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Any other comments or questions? I see none. Chelsea, could you please call a vote?
Member Baranski?
Yes.
Member Blankie?
Yes.
Uh, Mayor Carnegie?
Yes.
Member Colca?
Yes.
Member Lessig?
Yes.
Member Shornak?
Yes.
Member Winawicki?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you much, Mike.
Thank you very much.
Uh, C two, Southeast Regional Emergency Service, also known as SERESA. Go ahead, Mr. Thompson.
This is, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a, uh, follow-up from our discussions of last week. Uh, and I, I believe, uh, uh, Sherry Barkum is here from SERESA and I know Mike Pettis is here as well. And, uh, there has, we provided a little bit of additional information as requested, as was requested by the council. And, and just to kind of summarize, our, our, uh, the question before the council tonight really is, is relatively simple. Uh, it, it, and that is, what's the nature of our relationship with SERESA going to be? Are we going to be a contract customer or a member of the organization? Um, it isn't a question about whether we continue to have a relationship with SERESA. I think that's, that's not the question. The question is what will the nature of that relationship be? As we have said earlier, our recommendation is that we, uh, express our desire to be a member of the organization, understand, uh, as we said last time, that, um, the other, uh, three members have to, uh, agree to, uh, uh, expand the membership to include us. And that's, you know, that's not, uh, a one hundred percent, uh, guarantee. So, uh, anyway, that's where we are. Uh, from a timing standpoint, we had the discussion last week and, uh, we, we need to make a decision one way or the other, uh, tonight. Uh, again, the nature of the relationship, not whether there will be one or not.
Right. Any comments or questions from council for the interim director, or Sherry? I don't see any. Let me. I'm trying to find my page with the numbers on it. Councilwoman Baranski.
Yeah, I'll start. Um, I, I am a hundred percent committed to the idea that it's always important to have a seat at the table. And, um, my only hesitancy is the numbers that were given to us that, um, show, you know, that it's more expensive than I thought it would be to be a member going forward, um, compared to the contractual pricing. And that just causes me concern only because anytime, you know, you outsource and now we're up and we're up and it's now in twenty twenty-four, it's twenty thousand dollars more, slightly less or whatever the math is. Um, yeah, nineteen thousand dollars more, I think it is. Um, so I'm conflicted because I do think it's important to have a seat at the table and I, I, I'm just conflicted because I didn't think there was going to be such a disparity. And i- and even though it may only be twenty thousand dollars, it's twenty thousand plus the thirteen plus the interims. So, um, I just, I'm torn.
Okay. Well, I also agree with you a hundred percent. I think it's important as a community to be involved, to be sitting at the table with, uh, such an important part of our community and its residents and what it does for them. So, um, I, I believe the numbers are what they are. I don't think there's anything that I can do about it or we can do about it this time. Before I make a motion, I'll listen to any of the comments, but if no one liked it, I'll go ahead. Okay, I'll go ahead.
Michael.
I'm sorry, go ahead. I can't.
Right next to you. Don't go like this.
I can't see your hand. Go ahead.
Okay, um, my question is, if we decided today that we didn't want to be a member, could we always, would that be something that we would, if we changed our mind next year, um, would that be available to us?
Are you asking me?
Who are you asking? Yeah.
I'm asking Sharon.
I, I don't see why not. I, if we go into a contractual agreement like we've been in in the last three years, um, I, I don't see why you couldn't put that in as a clause, you know, that you as a city could, you know, at some point. I mean, so this, this time we waited the full three years before we entered into this discussion. I don't see why that couldn't be a clause in a new contract. I, I guess I would have to defer to the attorneys, but that seems logical to me, but I can't speak on behalf of the board or the attorneys. That just seems like a, a logical statement. I don't know. Director Pettis, what do you think?
To, yeah, it would be a request. It would be in the, to write in the contract that at any time or at after a year to request, um, to become a member. Again, this has to be approved by three other city councils. So tonight is just a request to move forward if we want to go that route to see if we can become members. Um, so can it be put into the contract? I mean, again, I think that contract has to be approved by the SERESA board, um, to request, hey, we'd like, uh, in our contract, a, a request that we can come to you at year one, two or three to, um, bring that to the three municipalities, uh, councils to, uh, see if we could become membership. I mean, I, 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 I certainly think that's, uh, we could, yeah. Um, that would have to be, again, our contract with SERESA, um, those numbers are in there, but I believe that contract still has to be approved, or it does have to be approved by the board. So we can request, uh, anything we want into that, um, that contract, I guess. It's just, it's, it's a contract negotiation. We'd have to negotiate into that, and that into the contract.
Well, the reason why I ask that is while I see the value of having a seat at the table, I do. And I do understand that, and we're just going to use the word profit sharing for lack of a better scenario, but I understand that, you know, SERESA has a very productive year and their costs are less and stuff that they, in essence, profit share with those communities. But I can anticipate that thirteen thousand dollars this year would be recouped, if you will, by the city. I can't imagine that many, you know, cuts, especially in such a, uh, very important service. I mean, nine one one is a huge, very, very important service. That's not somewhere you're going to want to make cuts, obviously. So that, and I do understand that we're looking to get funding, um, hopefully from a tax, but we, nobody likes to ever, as, as the city knows, wants to, no one ever wants to be taxed more. And so I don't see that going real well. Um, so I, you know, it's kind of, I'm not a gambling person. I am not a gambler. So that's why I'm kind of questioning it. Again, understanding the importance of the seat at the table. I just don't know if
Right.
if the amount of money outweighs what we get, you know, best pay per buck.
Yeah, and the bottom line for you all to know is Yeah. And the bottom line for you all to know is that the service that we get from Seresa, whether we're a contract employee or we're a member, the service doesn't change. We still get the great service that we're going to get either way from Seresa. So it's your, it's, it's a decision on, on what direction you want to go, but it's the same service we're getting. So I don't have any change on that. So it really is an administrative decision on you, on, on the, on the board, um, and figure out how you, how you want to proceed on that.
I, I have my hand up just because, um, I, if I turn my video on, I'm going to be really lagging and slow. So that's why I put my hand up. If I, if I can see.
Yeah, go ahead, sure.
Okay. Um, I, and I was going to address the same thing. I don't want you to think that just because you don't have a seat at the board, that Frazier isn't involved. Um, I had mentioned last time that, uh, uh, we asked board members and, or the, the member cities to sit on our hiring board. And I believe that we had Lieutenant Bisby sitting on one of our boards, not this last time, but the time before. Um, we still involved over the last three years. Uh, City of Frazier was heavily involved in, in, um, everything we did from the fire ops to the police ops to the law tech committee and, um, most all the time we had a Frazier representative at the Seresa board meeting. And while he didn't technically have a vote, he certainly was there and they, you know, they asked his opinion. So, uh, I'm not trying to sway you. Don't misunderstand me. I'm not trying to sway you one way or another. I just don't want you to think that if you decide not to become or not to request membership, that we're just going to say, oh, you're a contract and, you know, a contract, so we're not going to pay attention to you. You are just as important to us as any of our other public safety customers. And whether you're a member or a contract city, that title doesn't matter. You're still our customers and that's, that's important to, uh, Sat Seresa. I just wanted to rest your mind about that.
I just, you know, my, I a hundred percent knew that. That was not even my concern. I'm just looking at this from a financial standpoint, especially with, um, the excess tax. We're already assessing on our citizens. And, you know, the fact that, uh, obviously hiring new people for new positions is quite costly, more so than what we were, um, you know, initially anticipating. So I'm just trying to think, for me is, again, best thing for our book. And since I do know that you guys do include the City of Frazier, um, in decision making, just taking suggestions, obviously, that vote, that's, that's more or less what I wanted to know. So thank you, Sheri.
Mayor Proton, Winawiki?
Going back to the financial, um, part of this. So if we become members, um, is it my understanding that, that the rate is pretty much locked in? As a contract employee, um, and this is still part of the same question, as a contract employer, a contract, service, what would, what would cause, you know, uh, the pricing to go over and above the estimate? So like, how can we close that gap? How can we justify it? Can you tell me how we can justify, um, that thirteen thousand dollar difference between becoming a member this year or hanging on for one more year as a contract? Does that, does that make sense?
Um, no, I don't really, I'm not, I'm not really following you. I apologize.
Okay, so I'll, I'll try again. What would cause, uh, so we have an estimate this year of what our contract price would be. And then we have the, 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 um, membership rate. There's disparity there, okay? What would happen or what, what are, what could happen? What would the possibility be that we would go over our, uh, over our contract price? That would get us closer to that locked in price for the membership?
Um, I, I'm not, I'm still not sure I understand what you're saying, but, um, I guess, I guess the only thing that I could see, so if you went into a contractual price, um, the only thing I can see changing in the next year would really be the, the, uh, the forty-two cent surcharge being approved by the Board of Commissioners. You know, that's, uh, and I, and I couldn't guarantee that. Um, you know, I, that, I would have to talk to, you know, we would have to work that out with Mr. Walters and, and those figures would all be, you know, come through him. But I'm, I'm assuming if, uh, you know, if forty-two cents on it, on all devices that can call nine one one came through, I am assuming there would be adjustments on a new contract or on our member cities. I, I don't know if that answers your question or not.
So, so the, the, the surcharge, if, if you get the surcharge, that's not shared with contracts, but it is shared with members?
Well, I don't know what your current contract says about that. I don't believe there's any provisions in your current contract for, uh, adjustment of a, of a stated contract rate.
Yeah.
Should there be a membership, um, or should there be a nine one one fee assessed at the county level?
Yeah, my understanding from the previous presentations is that, uh, as a member, that is shared with members only, not with contractual, um, cities.
Mr. Winawiki, I, that's certainly, I think the, uh, the understanding that, that I got from last time is that the contract rate is a fixed rate, uh, regardless of the financial situation that Seresa might find itself in. And if there is a, a good year, uh, there may be some distribution, uh, but that distribution goes back to the members and, and not to a customer, so to speak. Um, and I think that's, uh, the, the contract is a fixed price, isn't going to go up or go down in a year. Um, the other side of it, uh, does have some variability in it, the, the membership, uh, the membership side. My understanding is that in some previous years, there has been distribution of, uh, uh, excess funds or savings back to the members. And, and whether or not the tax gets put in place or not, uh, remains to be seen, but that, uh, that would be another example of, of, uh, additional revenues.
So that's kind of where I was trying to get, is that we could close that thirteen thousand dollar gap with the possibility of the shared revenue.
Yes.
And, but if there is no shared revenue, then our contract price is locked in. And there's no, there, there can't be any, any, uh, extra charges at the end of the year that, oh, we only expected, you know, five thousand calls and you ended up getting seven thousand calls. So here's the overage, which would then, which would still, um, you know, get, close that gap.
Yes, right. There, there might be an adjustment in future years if our call volume goes up as a percentage of the total.
Okay.
That, that might occur, but, but not in a, once there's a contract, I think that's a fixed number for that year.
Yes. Did you get that, Dave?
Yes.
When we lock in the contract, those prices, it stays. After the contract, if our call volume goes up, that's when they can get a price increase going forward, not for that year. You have the contract, I believe. Councilwoman Shornak, yes. Councilwoman Shornak, thank you, Sheri.
So I just, I, and I got back to the hopeful tax, um, even at nineteen thousand calls, even if you did nineteen thousand calls at seven thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars. So even if they got that extra revenue, that extra revenue wouldn't necessarily, and say those were just our calls. Those, that wouldn't necessarily come back to us. And still that's half of what we would be paying to be a member. So, and that's if, and again, I'm not a gambling person at all. Ask my kids. And, um, I, I'm just, you know, trying to weigh the cost versus, it's the pros and cons really, for me.
And I guess I'd say this, this is a, this is not a clear cut decision as, as we're figuring out here and, 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 um, uh, there is, there, like many clear cut decisions, there's risk on, on both sides. Uh, uh, so it's, it's a, it's not real clear. Uh, our recommendation is, is to, uh, proceed because of, uh, because of the potential for the economics, but also because of our, uh, desire to have a seat at the table, as we said earlier. But it's, it's, you know, it's a tough call.
I, I guess to add full, full disclosure that, uh, the other municipalities, um, accepting us as membership is not a slam dunk. I mean, they're, they're weighing the same things you are. And, uh, the fact that we want to be a part of Seresa doesn't mean that we will be a part of Seresa. There's a very real possibility that, um, councils could want to keep Frazier as a contract, um, employee. So, um, how we vote today, other than, uh, you know, voting, uh, the, the vote to become members is, is not by any stretch a slam dunk in, in any way that will be accepted as a member.
You're muted, Mayor. There you go.
We, we keep crossing each other out. Councilwoman Baranski?
Yeah, how would that break down then? What if, say, St. Clair Shores votes no, but East Point and, um, Roseville vote yes? Does it have to be unanimous for all three cities? And is it their council or the board?
Council.
Council, city council.
The articles are set up, the articles are set up that the city councils have to vote. The, the board, the board appointed people just take it back to their city councils. The Seresa board itself, um, doesn't actually vote new cities and it's the city councils that.
Right. Thank you. That makes sense. They, they'd get a financial gain by having us join. So.
Right. It would be less, right.
Yeah, they'd get more money by us being members than as, uh, contract employees, but who knows? They may vote no. You never know why people vote the way they know vote.
Councilwoman Blinky?
Thank you. Sheri? You still there?
I am.
Sheri, okay. Um, interim, uh, Pettis just mentioned, and, and it was mentioned earlier that, okay, about the vote, you know, would have to be unanimous to kind of bounce us out, even though we're trying to figure out if we should go in. Uh, what would be some of those reasons why they wouldn't accept Frazier as a member? I mean, what did they use for criteria? Uh, I'm just curious, what would make it a negative decision to accept us?
I couldn't answer that. I, I, um, I think I've been to maybe two city council meetings per city in the last ten years. Um, I don't go typically unless, unless I've been invited. So I, I don't know. I, I couldn't answer that question. I apologize.
Right. But, and, and I understand that. And then you understand my concern. You know, we're talking about like, um, Mike said, you know, we, we might not even get voted into the, the flock here. I just wondered what we did wrong or what would they use as a criti, why would we get sent into a timeout when we're not even in it? You know, at this point. So I was curious, you know, in this society, God only knows what we did wrong. I don't know. Just a question. Thank you. Mike, do you have any idea?
Wha- what we did wrong or what, why we wouldn't get voted in?
I mean, why wouldn't we get voted in? It's hypothetical. I get it. But say, uh, two out of the three, and Councilwoman Baranski said, you know, it has to be unanimous. Uh, I mean, what do you do wrong not to get voted in if you're willing to pay the extra money? That doesn't make any sense to me.
I mean, my, I mean, it would be a financial decision if they, if those councils don't think it's in the financial best interest of their city to allow us in and would prefer us to be a, um, a contract employee where they, if there is, uh, you know, you're giving up equity into your, um, into your, uh, to the Seri, to Seresa. So if there is money to come back, if there's money coming in, which is the surtax of six hundred thousand dollars as a group, and they can vote any way they want. They can take that six hundred thousand, say, we're going to distribute it all back to the communities. Well, they don't have to distribute anything back to Frazier. They can vote and to do with those funds as they will. And they could, uh, in theory and practice, and realistically, they would benefit from that and we may not, um, would be the answer to that.
Okay. Well, then my next question would be, in theory, I understand that, but here we're talking about paying a fee. So we would pay our fees, we would follow the rules, you know, whatever. So I, I get what you're saying. It's a financial probably decision and a financial matter, you know, what the bottom line would be. But I, I'm still just a little curious. They're asking us to pay, um, and, and, you know, a certain amount to be a member. We pay the, we pay the membership, but we may be disqualified because of the, the financials, right? Is basically what you're saying.
What's, it's how they look at it because we are paying more. So you could look at it, Frazier's paying more to be a member. It takes cost. It lowers our costs. And if you see the numbers, it lowers the cost next year for those three communities because we're paying more. So you could look at it like, hey, we're going to save a few bucks this year with Frazier coming in. Let's bring them aboard. Um, but you're kind of asking, oh, you know, what, why people vote the way I, I, you know, it's, it's all on how they look at it, how it's presented, um, to them.
Yeah, no, I'm not asking how they vote. I, I understand that challenge. But I, I just wondered, you know, when there's a decision whether to accept you, I'm supposing, and I'm certain you're correct, and what Mr. Thompson said, there's finances involved, some kind of a formula, whatever, and so on. Thank you.
I sure have a question for you. If we were to make a motion to request that they review and see if they would have accept Frazier on the board, can the decision to take that acceptance happen after? To see how they're going to vote instead of, you know, yeah, we're, we're interested. Uh, we'd really like to consider this, but we want to make sure that we're going to be a partner before we decide what we're going to do.
I would second that motion.
I could certainly ask that. The Seresa board, um, requested me and, and I think it was a vote, Sheri, if I'm not right, that I proceed with this, that the step was, is that I bring this to you first and then based on this vote, it, I would bring it to them to, um, to bring to their councils to see if we would be accepted. Um, I believe that was the vote, right, Sheri? Or that's, that was the, well, I know it was, but did we vote on that or was that just discussed?
This is. I was, uh, I was just looking at the minutes. I know it was discussed and that's what, um, that's what everybody agreed on. It wasn't specifically voted on, but that, that is what we, everyone agreed on. At our last board meeting.
So in my, in my opinion, I'm kind of saying, okay, before I invest in this, I want to make sure that we're going to be a partner, being accepted as a partner, uh, to make this investment, to do that. To me, thirteen thousand dollars is not that much money to be a, a seat, but I want to make sure that I'm welcome to be on that seat and that we're accepted to be on that seat. Mr. Denault?
I can probably solve this discussion, this part of it anyway. Uh, all we'd be doing tonight is, if it was the council's will, um, would be a motion to approve an application to become part of Seresa.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and it doesn't, it, it doesn't mean we're approving a contract because, um, Director Pettis and I, and Director Pettis and I have gone through this agreement at length. Uh, we've made extensive modifications to this Articles of Incorporation document. And that is. And that is got, that has to go back to each of the member communities right now anyway. Uh, if we wish to proceed with applying to become part of the, the, the trifecta, we'd be the fourth member. Uh, assuming three different cities all say yes, then this council still has the right to look at the final version of this Articles of Incorporation document.
Correct.
And decide if it's what Frazier wants. So it'd be sort of like asking permission to join and then making a decision after you know they want you, whether or not you do wish to join. But tonight's action would not mean you are bound to this document. This document is certainly subject to change based on those three other communities looking at it.
Right. That's exactly where I was going with it. Thank you. Councilwoman Baranski.
I'd make the motion as outlined by, uh, Mr. Denault. Um, I think that's a perfect solution because
Yeah.
we can worry about the dollars and cents after we know if we're going to have a seat at the table.
Right.
Second, I s- second.
Okay. We have a motion and second to, um, um, as stated by City Attorney Denault's suggestion.
Dan, can you repeat that just so? I know I'll, I'll get a copy of this, but I just kind of want to wrap my head around it. Um, can you repeat that motion?
Go ahead, Dan.
Sure. I'll try. Um, essentially, Mike, the motion that has been made is for the city of Frazier to apply, uh, to join Cerisa as a participating municipality.
With the terms as outlined.
Yeah.
With the quote, um, given to us by, I'm assuming this came from John Walters. Like under those parameters, does that make sense? I'm not saying or no.
I don't know if we have to go by that. Yeah.
Well, I guess I wanted them to know that, a- and maybe it's not in the motion, but so that, um, interim Director Pettis can let them know. W- we understand the terms and we're willing to apply under those terms. Like, we're not looking to change the terms. We just ma- we just may not apply because it may not be financially prudent. Does that make sense? And I don't want to make it more complicated.
Mike, I think that, I think the messaging, Mike, Mike messaging, messaging you'd be conveying to Cerisa would be, and, and Sheri's here too. The messaging seems to me is very simple unless anyone wants to correct me. The messaging is this, city of Frazier is interested in becoming a participating member. That's the definition of being a partner in the, in the foursome that, that would become Cerisa. Uh, the city of Frazier would like to move forward with asking Cerisa member municipalities to approve that request. If the three, once the three of them do, it has to come back to Frazier to final, finally approve the Articles of Incorporation. So that, that's really the messaging here is that city can't say we're applying under these specific terms because Cerisa and the three communities could still change this document a little bit. This is just, Mike, this is really just your, your work, my work and Sheri's work at this point.
Correct.
Yeah.
Right. Which was a concern for, right, for them. Right. Okay. Sheri, are we?
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure it was.
Good with that, Sheri?
Yeah, I'm good with that. I have it all typed out.
Okay. So we do have a motion and second. Any other comments or questions? Uh, Chelsea, could you please call a vote?
Member Baranski?
Yes.
Member Blanke?
Yes.
Mayor Carnegie?
Yes.
Member Colka?
Yes.
Member Lessig?
Yes.
Member Shornak?
Yes.
Member Winawiki?
Yes.
Great. Well, thank you, Sheri. Thank you, Tony. And thank interim Pettis for, uh, bringing this forward and going over it with us. Let us know how it works out.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Uh, item C three, uh, municipal employees retirement system of Michigan MERS addendum agreement. Mr. Thompson.
Um, we think this is, uh, ready, uh, to move forward. Uh, this again, uh, this is sort of, uh, in large part Amy Sell's agenda here this evening. So A- Amy's, uh, and her people have done, uh, the work with, uh, the various, uh, groups, uh, in the, uh, uh, the, the, uh, uh, collective bargaining, uh, groups here. So fundamentally, what this does is sort of, uh, solidify the various relationships between, uh, groups of city employees and the munis- uh, Michigan, uh, employee, uh, the MERS. Uh, Amy, do you want to fill in any gaps, um, in providing a little bit of detail?
Sure. Just, um, a few brief remarks on it. Um, so these are the adoption addendums that are periodically requested by the Michigan Employees Retirement Services, which is, you know, the organization that manages the pensions of Frazier employees and retirees. Uh, there's one for each division number and name on file. Um, and I really want to thank, uh, the union business representatives and key Frazier employees, including Nicole Reinhardt, uh, Lieutenant Dave Bisbee, um, and Sergeant Scott Winkowski for their huge support and dedication going through this pretty detailed process. Uh, so the, again, the documentation in your packet confirms how to implement, uh, the various pension related calculations and inclusions, uh, that have been negotiated in the collective bargaining agreements.
Okay, um, what action? Did you need any on this, Mark?
Yep. So we, oh, I think Mark's on mute.
Mark, you're muted, Mark.
Uh, I think we, uh, a motion to accept contract amendments between the city of Frazier and MERS. Is that accurate, Amy?
Um, yep. We just need, because we have to have a authorized designee, uh, signifying that this foregoing addendum is hereby approved by the city of Frazier at a board meeting which took place. So I'll defer to Don for the exact.
Yeah. I was just going to ask Mr. Denault, have you, uh, reviewed this and are you satisfied with it all?
Yes. The motion, the motion would be, uh, Amy Sell is very close because that's where we would be signing. It would be a motion to approve the defined benefit plan adoption agreement addendum as presented.
I would like to make a motion to whatever Mr. Denault just said. Uh, which is authorization of an addendum to the Michigan Municipal Employees Retirement System.
I'll support.
Agreement.
Okay. I support. We have a motion and support. Any other comments or questions? Chelsea, could you please call a vote?
Member Baranski?
Yes.
Member Blanke?
Yes.
Mayor Carnegie?
Yes.
Member Colka?
Yes.
Member Lessig?
Yes.
Member Shornak?
Yes.
Member Winawiki?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries. Well, item.
Information Technology Services.
I believe there's been a lot of work done on this. Um, and Miss Sell, do you want to have a floor or is this Mr. Thompson?
I think, um, Amy is the, the right person here. As, as I said, uh, this is, uh, in large part that Amy Sell agenda this evening, it seems.
Okay. Go ahead, Amy. You have a floor.
Um, sure. Um, again, a huge, amazing team that's been working on this, including Mayor Pro Tem Winawiki, Councilmember Lessig, Lieutenant Dave Bisbee and Sergeant Eric Myers, who have, in a very detailed and impressive way, gone through the applications that we've received from 14 firms that were interested in providing Frazier with services. Uh, we had interviews with six of those firms. And then three of them have been invited to do onsite visits. Again, thanks to Lieutenant Bisbee and Sergeant Myers for hosting those visits. Um, I am in the process now of receiving revised proposals as well as contract language that we will have, uh, keep, you know, Don Denault busy with reviewing. Um, and from that, we will have another team meeting, uh, to kind of finalize the revised and updated information. Um, with a plan to provide a recommendation, uh, to council shortly. But within, I mean, with, this should be wrapped up in about three weeks. So I think at the next meeting, they'll be ready for a recommendation.
Yeah. Next, uh, month will be nice to get this one off the slate. Uh, will there be, when they do these visits, will Mayor Pro Tem or Councilman Lessig be part of that visit?
Uh, they've already been completed, um, and they were managed by the staff.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. We, we did our independent visits to check out the IT rooms and the IT racks and things like that, uh, prior to them, uh, visiting city hall and other locations. So we, we've kind of, there won't be any wool pulled over anyone's eyes.
Good. Cause, um, with IT, you could easily pull it over my eyes. I'm glad that you guys are part of it. Uh, Councilwoman Baranski, you were first.
Um, yes, Amy, I just wanted to confirm. So are we, is the timeline such that at the April meeting, we would be voting to approve one of the contractors or one of the vendors for the contract?
I believe so, yes.
That works for me.
Yep.
I'm good.
Councilman Lessig.
Yes. I'd like to, uh, first of all, start by saying thank you to, uh, Lieutenant Bisbee and Sergeant Myers. They have, uh, been doing a great job in, uh, managing from the, the city administration side and the employee needs side, uh, what we have. And, uh, they've had several conversations, my understanding, with some prospective vendors. Uh, the three that we've been looking at a little more closely, they all bring good things to the table. It's a matter of deciding which one, uh, which, which of the three is the best. I would hope that the recommendation comes from the administrative side. Uh, at me as a councilperson and a user and a consumer of these, uh, like the Zoom meetings and our other infrastructure, I'm a consumer of that, but the employees have to live with it every day. So I would hope that they are comfortable. Uh, I believe that the RFPs, the final numbers will come in and we'll have a very good idea of what those, uh, what those are. And what they will be, once they get it, once whatever vendor we have gets on board, they may find some small things, but, uh, as Mayor Pro Tem said, they won't be pulling the wool over our, we've, they've tightened that up quite a bit. So, um, I believe that in April, we will come back and be able to deliberate and consider a very worthy, um, solution. And I look forward to it. I think it will be an upgrade. And, uh, it won't necessarily be a less expensive solution, but I believe it will offer us both, uh, stability. Uh, I guess stability, continuity and a path forward. So I look forward to it. Thank you.
Right. Thank you. Anybody else? No. Okay. Uh, we look forward to seeing you next month on this. Um, and hopefully the administration, I know, uh, talking to Lieutenant Bisbee and Sergeant Myers before the meeting, I think they said they will definitely feel like they'll be ready for the next meeting. So, uh, we can get this wrapped up and move on to another, other thing. So thank you all for your help. And at that point, we'll move to item eight, pending items on unfinished business, a report of city administration. Mr. Thompson.
I have, uh, just two things, Mr. Mayor. Um, we have a, a vacancy in the building department as it relates to, uh, our code enforcement. And, uh, we would like the ability to proceed and, and fill that vacancy as, uh, as soon as possible. Uh, and, and so we, we seek that authorization from the council this evening and be happy to answer any questions that, that, uh, that you may have. Uh, we're, we're coming into the, uh, busy time of the year, uh, and we'd like to get somebody on board. Uh, a lot of the code enforcement is sort of complaint driven by neighbors who are outside again. And, and so we'd like to have somebody on board, uh, with a little bit of sort of training behind them before we get into the busy season. So we, excuse me, we would ask for authorization to proceed with filling that vacancy.
Great. Uh, Councilwoman Blanke.
I'd like to make a motion, uh, if everyone's okay with that. I'd like to make a motion to, uh, direct the city manager and Amy Sell to hire a code enforcement officer.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and second. Any other comments or questions on that motion? I see none. Chelsea, could you please call a vote?
Member Baranski?
Yes.
Member Blanke?
Yes.
Mayor Carnegie?
Yes.
Member Colka?
Yes.
Member Lessig?
Yes.
Member Shornak?
Yes.
Member Winawiki?
Yes.
Motion carries. You have anything else, Mr. Thompson?
Uh, one other thing, uh, Mr. Mayor, excuse me. Um, um, we will, this is probably not news that the council wants to hear, but we will probably be looking at scheduling, uh, an extra meeting next month and perhaps in May. Excuse me, as, as we are getting into budget time. And, and I had hoped that I wouldn't be here during the budget preparation time. It turns out it's not going to work that way. So, um, uh, that's one of the reasons that, uh, Mr. Walters and I, uh, were this, together this afternoon. And he's done a lot of, of work already on this subject, but we'll need to be getting together with the council to, um, work through that budget process. So we get it, uh, done in time. So I suspect, uh, we'll be in contact with council members about scheduling an extra meeting in May and, uh, rather in April and May, so that we're, we're on schedule.
And also, Mr. Thompson, if we need to have a work session meeting, we can definitely schedule a work session meeting also.
Uh, ye- yes, sir. I, I would hope that we could find a, a meeting in there that we could devote exclusively, some exclusively to that, to this topic.
Yes.
I've done lots of budgets, but not in Michigan and not with this council. So it'll be a learning process, uh, certainly for me.
Well, I, I think at least one work session strictly based on the budget would be good to do.
Yeah.
Okay. Amy Sell.
I just wanted to know if it would be appropriate now to, uh, talk about some other staffing.
Yes, absolutely. Go ahead, please.
Um, so one request I have is to move forward with a full-time finance and recreation clerk.
I would make that motion.
Uh, Councilwoman Baranski.
Could, could you just clarify sort of how that role came together so that the residents understand the part-time and the merging and all that?
Yes, thank you. Um, so in the past, we have had a part-time finance clerk position that, uh, the incumbent, uh, left the city and has been vacant. Um, so there has been extra workload in the finance department. Um, and then since the recent reorganization of bringing the recreation department activities together uh, with upcoming summer activities and programming to be considered, um, as well as the new IT contract, um, I would like to provide, uh, Mr. Nayland with additional staff to be able to, um, take on, um, and paint that white canvas. And I think this person could bring, uh, many colors and paintbrushes in their palette to assist with that opportunity.
Okay. Any other questions? We're going to make rainbows in this city, aren't we?
We have to find a better analogy. We're not kindergartners. It's killing me.
So we do have a motion. Looking for a second.
I'll second.
Can we have a motion and a second? Any other comments or questions?
I have a question. What? Yes. At what level is this, is this higher? Is this a clerical position under the union? Or is it a non-management position, uh, approximate salary range?
It, it would be a clerk position within the clerical union. And I would be working with the union representatives to, uh, go through the position creation and pegging position, uh, bidding process and posting process.
Okay. So this would not be an accounting supervisory. I just want to clarify that.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Chelsea, could you please call a vote?
Member Baranski?
Yes.
Member Blanke?
Yes.
Mayor Carnegie?
Yes.
Member Colka?
Yes.
Member Lessig?
Yes.
Member Shornak?
Yes.
Member Winawiki?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries. Amy Sell?
Then I can also provide an update on the elections clerk, uh, position. Um, so Mark Thompson had interviews this week with, um, four candidates. We are moving forward with background checks on three of those candidates. Um, upon receipt of successful background checks, I will be starting to, I will provide candidate information to everyone, uh, next week. And I will start scheduling interviews for the week after. I think that's probably an appropriate timeframe. So that we will also be able to have interviews, full council, public interviews in April. I'm not sure because of the timing, my strong preferences do have interviews on a different day than deliberations. So I'm not sure exactly how the schedules for those are going to be working. But I'll be looking, you know, forward to working with Mark on a council meeting that will, you know, be appropriate with the Easter holiday and other things that are coming up.
Okay, Councilwoman Bransky?
So you, your anticipation is that the process will be similar to prior, except for you're now handling ahead of time the background information. So that when we then in small group settings have our, our interview, our introductory meetings, we will be equipped with the information. And then the formal interview process would be in a city council meeting in, in public.
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, and I, i- if we do it that way, it was very efficient. And so I appreciate you bringing it that way. I, I think that based on what you and I have discussed about the caliber of the candidates and how, and what you've proven in terms of ability, I'd be comfortable deliberating and doing it all the same day. I, I'm trying to get away from meetings every two weeks. And especially as we go into the spring and things start to open up and life gets busy again. So whatever we can do to, I don't want to be overpacked, but I want these meetings to be packed because chop it off. You know, done, 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 done. And then we can get to the budget because that's going to be very time consuming. So, um, so thank you for that update.
Thank you.
Yeah, I do agree with you, Councilwoman Bransky. As long as we have all, like you said, good information upfront, all questions asked upfront, and we can make a logical decision at that time, it'll all work. Otherwise, it always gets delayed.
All right.
Anything else, Miss Sell?
Uh, then the city manager search. So I would like to get guidance from the, or confirmation from council to begin that process. I will be provide, my plan would be to launch the search next week. Um, I would expect to, the process is usually to post and pre-screen for, have the posting up for four weeks. Then have another week to fully vet candidates that come in at the end. I would be providing a, present, I would present candidates to council around the 22nd. You would have about a week to review the candidates and then we would make a decision around the 29th of which to select. Interviews could be done on May 6th with a decision on May 13th. Again, we can play around with the exact schedules and dates, but that would be the, you know, more aggressive timing that I would be, timeframe that I would be looking at. And I'll provide, you know, regular updates throughout the process.
Where will you be posted, this city manager's position at?
Uh, the Michigan Municipal League, Strategic Government Resources, the ICMA, as well as LinkedIn indeed. And I have a distribution list of municipal talent that I'll be networking with as well.
Okay, so lots of options. Great.
It's good to hear it's not just MERS now. Or, or, or now MERS.
MML.
MML, yeah.
Well, that is a really good source.
I, I, I get that, but I, I, it's something that we always wanted before to have other options. And you've brought that to the table and I really appreciate that.
Anything else, Amy?
I think that's about it. Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you for your help. Councilman Lessig?
Yes, Amy, Ms. Sell, can you forward the council a background or kind of an executive summary of what your posting will look like before you posted? So, because previously we've had work sessions where we discussed our goals and objectives for city manager. And it doesn't sound like we're going to have the time to do that. I would like to at least weigh in or at least review what you are putting out there for seeking a a top-notch city manager. I would like to at least see what we're looking for in that candidate and perhaps get some people.
Definitely, we'll do.
Thank you.
Great. Anybody else? Okay, unless you can find a cloning company, we can call Mark before you.
I, I haven't given up on that.
Okay, thank you. Let's see. That's it. Okay, reported mayor and city council. Okay, I'll go left from right. Councilwoman Bransky?
Um, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only two things I want to bring up. I was talking to Mr. Denault and I know, based on my conversation with him, I think he might have had some conversation with a few other people. So I wanted to, if everyone else was in agreement, I don't know if we need a motion or just a directive to Mr. Denault. There's a few things in our bylaws that need updating, modification, tweaking. And I wanted to task him with the project of, with input from council on whoever, and just via email or communication with Don separately. Um, one of the, one of the bylaw requirements is the meeting time and it doesn't say 6:30 and so that should be updated. Um, but wanted to have him start that process. And I can't remember, we spoke before the meeting and I can't remember, Don, if you told me I needed a motion or if just a directive was enough, or if the will of council was to have those. Because it's very important that our bylaws are as up to date as possible. So that's the first thing I wanted to talk about.
Yeah, I would believe direction would be fine, but Mr. Denault, you can confirm it?
I agree. I don't think we need a formal motion vote. I think simply just talking about it tonight and giving me feedback. And, um, uh, we did talk just on this Zoom, is what she's referring to, before everybody joined in, we were both on early. And she just asked about it and I told her that I thought that would be the right process. It does probably need some updating, the whole book, not just that one rule about meeting times. So certainly, uh, all of you should feel free to submit thoughts and suggestions. What I will do to help prompt that is I will circulate the document to all of you in your email. That'll help remind you or prompt you to say, okay, I've got the document right here. I can open it up, take a look through it. And just let me know if there's any ideas that you'd like me to incorporate. I will build everything in. And then obviously it's ultimately subject to council's will, uh, whether or not to adopt all of those ideas, but we'll get them all into the, into the mix and see what comes out.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Don. And then the se- the second thing I just wanted to talk about, we have been blessed with some COVID relief funds that we're going to get. And so I would like to make sure that we put on the agenda a conversation next month about completing the balance of the park updates. So that at least we could have all of the parks on the same timeframe. And so I want, I wanted council to start thinking about that, if that's something that they would be willing to consider. But it seems to me they've been neglected for 10 years, for the most part, at least the majority of them. So it would be nice if we could give the majority of them some TLC within, within a one-year timeframe. Because I'd like to get that accomplished so that it could be enjoyed this summer. I know the park, Pompo Park is packed every day. Um, I'm assuming Somerset is the same way. And I think it would be so wonderful if we could next month, you know, get this done so that bids could go out and park improvements could be done by June. You know, that's what I, that's my goal. So I would love to hear from everyone else about that, um, next month.
Okay, good thoughts. Yep, thank you. Councilman Winawiki, Mayor Protem?
Uh, first, I want to, again, welcome Mr. Ragsdale and Mr. Nayland. Uh, I think there are going to be some great additions to the city of Frazier and they'll do some great work for us. Uh, Amy and Mark, you, you both just astound me with, with all the hard work that you've done and everything uh, to keep us moving forward. And I thank the rest of council for all their patience, uh, and all of that. I'm also looking forward to working with the Parks and Rec Department in an ex officio advisory capacity.
Great, thank you. Councilwoman Susan Culka?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things. Um, I know last year when we were getting ready to do the budget, we had prerecorded budget presentations that were done. And I thought that they were very helpful instead of sitting through a six-hour meeting with a bunch of budget presentations. And I would propose that we do that again this year. That way I can look at it at my leisure and put, come up with the questions that I have before whatever session we need to do. I think it saves a ton of time and I just don't think it's effective for us to sit for four or five hours and have one budget presentation after another. So I would, I would recommend or I would put out to council that we should go down that road again. I think that's the most effective way to handle that. The other thing is to dovetail off of what Amy said as it relates to the the, the fund balance and as well as the money that we did get from the COVID relief. Uh, the things I'd like to see happen this year with the budget is I'd like to put another $800,000 towards MERS. We didn't really do that last year because the stock market was in a bad shape. It is rebounding now, uh, has been actually the last quarter of last year. So it's doing fairly well. Um, so I would like to see another $800,000 put towards MERS. I would really like to see if we can get away with not implementing PA 33 or obviously the least amount of possible. That's very important. I would like to see the, some more parks completed. You know, those, that's obviously important. And one of the things that happened, which is kind of an interesting thing is uh, this past fall, we had, um, in our subdivision, we actually had a resident organize a food truck to show up. And it was an amazing experience. I've never seen so many people outside in the park. And it was during COVID. Everyone was spaced out. So if you build it, they will come, I swear. Um, so that was a really great thing and I'd like, I'd, I'd really like to see that again this summer. Um, and even maybe something we could implement in different parks throughout the city, just to get the residents out with a food truck. Um, I think that would be a really great, uh, way to bring people together. So that being said, um, this will, this is our last, this is the, the 12th month of us meeting via Zoom, well, at least me. I can't speak for everyone, but, um, so that's been interesting. So next month will be the first, uh, time that we will be meeting again in April. And ironically, I'll be in Florida again. That's so weird. So anyway, everyone have a really great, uh, I guess, Easter, right? Because we won't be back until.
St. Patty's Day.
Well, that too, but we won't be back until, well, the end of, the end of, but Easter is the second. So, or the third or the fourth or something around there. But anyway, see ya.
Great. Well, I do have a question for you. When you said spaced out, was that from the food or was that social distancing?
The food was amazing, but they were spaced out because of social distancing.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Blankie?
Um, I have a question. When Councilwoman Culka just said that it'll change next month, are we coming back here as a group next month?
Uh, I was on a conference call with the governor's office yesterday and there's a possibility that next month might be the last month that they may still allow after that to go back to some meetings.
Good.
Meetings, so I.
Okay.
Don't know if it's official or anything like that at all, but I just heard that question was asked and it was answered in a way that it's a good possibility, so.
Okay, well, then I'm going to Florida with her. Oh, no. Okay, uh, of course, Easter is coming up.
I got room.
You always ask. I'll be the nanny. I'll be the nanny. I, I would like to thank Sergeant Myers, Lieutenant Bisbee. Uh, Patrice has been here with myself and the mayor for several of these meetings. And they have really done a great job and kept these meetings going with great initiative and care. So I thank you gentlemen, all of you. I would also like to just simply wish everyone a very happy and blessed Easter. Time of hope, a time of dreams and a time of wonderment. So despite everything that we've all been through, let's hold on to that hope and that wonderment. And God bless you all and have a great month. Thank you.
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, first, I know, thank you. Miracles do happen. Let's hope they keep happening so we can have regular meetings again. You see, I know I love Zoom. Not. Um, anyway, I want to, uh, if we're doing the thank yous, I wanted to thank Chelsea because Chelsea stepped into a role and she's done a great job. I really like our new format. It's just so much more efficient. It's kind of not all over the place. So thank you, Chelsea, for that great improvement. Um, sorry to, well, I'm happy for you. Sorry for us that you'd be leaving, but, um, you know, thank you for all the work you have put in. So that's number one. And then number two, um, I wanted to comment at the DPW that, good job to the DPW guys because I noticed in my neighborhood, somebody came through and cut all these branches that were hanging everywhere. And my neighbor who asked to have the one tree that was dying cut down four years ago, all of a sudden I came home and it was gone. So I was very surprised about that, which is great because the diseased trees need to come down. We can't keep them everywhere and then all the branches that keep hanging out are in hitting trucks. And the garbage truck comes through, then you have all these huge branches in your, in the streets and on your property. So, um, good work to the guys. I did have a suggestion for Mr. Thompson for the DPW. With the snow now melting and everything, wherever we have bus stops, we have lots of trash on the concurrent property. So I was hoping and or thinking that, I don't think it would be a big, big expense. And I think it would be for the beautification of the city that we put in tether, uh, trash cans that should be emptied, you know, once a week. Again, I don't think this will be overtaxing. I don't think it'll be a hard thing, uh, where those bus stations are. Because people tend to sit there for a really long time waiting for the bus and they don't tend to take their trash with them. And those individuals who live right by there don't tend to pick it up either. So just a request, I don't know, is that something possibly that the DPW can do, Mr. Thompson?
Uh, sure, I would, I don't see why not. It sounds like it makes sense. We, we, uh, let us look at where the bus stops are and how we anchor those things and, and that sort of stuff. But absolutely, that sounds like a good idea. If we can collect the trash in the can as opposed to all over the street, that makes great sense.
Thank you so much. Yeah, because it, it's very, I mean, it's bad enough, I've got to look at the Dairy Queen every day when I come home, that dilapidated building, although on a plus, the building on 13 Mile is looking quite nice now. So I'm very excited about what's going in there. Um, but of course, uh, the unsightly Dairy Queen, I get to look at every day, leaving and coming home. And then to have to see all the trash that's laying on that concurrent property is, you know, unsightly as well. So I, I believe that that would be a great improvement for the beautification of our city. And I also want to, um, thank everybody who's been putting in extra time to help facilitate our lovely meetings on Zoom. And also, everybody have a happy Easter. And I hope you can get together with your families that you've probably been avoiding and create some new memories. Because there's been a lot of time lost and a lot of memories lost over this last year. That's it. Thank you.
Councilman Lessig?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just want to go through a few things. We had a countywide macro meeting, our monthly macro meeting uh, with county municipal leaders. And Bill Anderson from the Southeastern Michigan Council of Governments gave us an update on the American Rescue Plan. It is a, just to go through some of the highlights, it's a $350 billion nationwide funding for local government, state and local governments. $10 billion will go to the state, $4 billion will go to counties and local municipalities. The timing of that is revenue must be distributed within 60 days of signing the bill. Counties will get the money directly from the federal government. Large municipalities will also get the money from the federal government. Smaller municipalities like Frazier, that money will be sent to the state and the state will have 30 days to distribute it. So we should be seeing it somewhere within 90 days, was his expectation. The amount of money we can expect is about $2.7 million, of which the first half of the funds will be distributed soon. And approximately 12 months later, the remaining funds will be available for distribution. The money must be spent by December 30th. The money must be spent by December 31st of 2024. It can be spent on a variety of things, some yet to be determined and some clarifying language yet to come out from the federal government and the Office of Management, but you can support essential services, local businesses. They mentioned nonprofits, other pandemic-related losses. It is to provide for revenue replacement. Nothing in the bill as to how to calculate what revenue is to be replaced or what your formula is for that. There is some hope that we can, we will be able to specify the type and source of revenue. For instance, PA 51 funds that were funded by fuel taxes. When we all stopped driving a year ago, that impacted the fuel tax fund, we could potentially hopefully replace some of that. The specific infrastructure that can be replaced in the length in the bill are water and sewer infrastructure or broadband infrastructure. There is broad latitude for those kind of projects. And prohibited, it cannot be used to pay down pension liabilities. But there was some question on whether we could use other monies and backfill. That remains to be seen, but the language in the law does not allow for getting a million and a half dollars and putting it directly into MERS. That is not something we can do. Oddly, we can transfer the money back to the state if we don't want it. No one on the call today thought that giving the money back to the state was a good idea. We can also transfer some to other governmental authorities, units as we saw fit. And many of the, the communities that we were talking to, they were asking like district courts. District courts have been impacted by lack of people coming in to pay fines and things. Could we use some of that to shore up funding in district court? It's possible. But these are the things that Mr. Anderson talked about. I can send you a list of the minutes or the meeting minutes today and hopefully give you some more idea of where this is going. Also, I would like to get a copy, Mr. Thompson, I believe you said the audit was available or it was completed. I would like to get a copy of that. Can the council be forwarded that soon? Or is there more to work to be done?
No, sir, there is no more work to be done. In fact, I intended to forward it to you tomorrow anyway, so you're, we'll forward it to everybody. It's exciting reading.
Okay, appreciate it. Always exciting reading, especially, yes, especially fresh off the press. I would like to see the Activity Center AV setup that we purchased last year get finally completed so we can perhaps do some in-person social distance council meetings. I think that is a, we invested in that stuff and it should be able to do the job. Glad to see the parks are moving forward. They've been neglected for about 30 years. Not just 10. So I am glad to see that is moving forward. And I do like to see what's going on in the Somerset and Popple. They look good and people are outside. And last but not least, I would, I would like to see if we can do request the citizen participation happen before we go into the close session tonight. So that people don't have to wait around to speak. And that would be it.
Great, thank you. I just have a few things. Wanted to thank everybody who came out for the Sutton Remembrance and the Clark Memorial we had on March 4th. We had a pretty good turnout. The clock looked absolutely wonderful, especially at night. I believe we sent some pictures out. Again, I wanted to sincerely thank Councilwoman Colka for her generous donation and helping me get that project done and off the list. I did inquire about getting it painted too, because it's been so long it's faded, but that's going to take me about $15,000 to come up with that. So I'm going to see if my, my, my paint company I work for can maybe, maybe do some donations or recommendations that we can get that thing repainted and put our name back on it, so. To update council, our extration tools that we have coming, looks like they'll be here at the end of the month, hopefully. It's been a little bit delayed because of it's a big order and it's kind of maybe COVID put things back. So once we have those in hand, I'm sure Sergeant Poole will be scheduling training on those new tools, so they're ready to go. I also wanted to thank Chelsea. I know she does a lot for me as a seat that I have here and she's been wonderful. I thanked earlier today and I congratulate her on her endeavor. I think she'll do good and Roseville is going to be a lucky city to get her, so. Also wanted to wish everybody a great Easter. It's going to be important for families to get together. I know that my granddaughter, my upcoming granddaughter is going to get to see their great grandparents this weekend. We're actually having something early, so it's been a long time coming. They all have their shots. It'll be a safe visit, so. I hope everyone gets their shots. I think it's moving quickly now. There's more shots available, so I keep recommending to everybody get their shots so we can get more back to normal, as quicker the better. And at that time, that's all I have. I wanted to thank everybody for participation tonight. And if council wishes, I can call for the participation, this participation if you'd like. That's, that's up to council.
Personally, fine with it.
Everybody good with that? Okay. Ready Dave? Okay, at this time, I will go ahead and jump over to item 11, citizen participation. If there's anybody in the waiting groups or anyone out there who would like to make any comments, please identify yourself and so we can recognize you, you can speak. Okay, I see none. Okay, I
Five minute break before we go into council.
Yeah, let me go ahead and make a motion to move it to close session for strategy discussion with legal counsel regarding negotiations related to a collective bargaining agreement at nine, 8:50 PM, sorry, 50 PM. A motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
We have to roll call?
Yeah.
I'm just going to call it. Go ahead, Chelsea, please call a vote.
Member Bransky?
Yes.
Member Blanky?
Yeah.
Mayor Carnegie?
Yes.
Member Colka?
Yes.
Member Lessig?
Yes.
Member Shornak?
Yes.
Member Wenawiki?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to a close session at 8:49 PM and give a five-minute break. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Call the meeting back to order at 10:10 p.m.
We don't have David. Oh, no, we do.
Yeah, we do.
Yep, I'm making a motion to adjourn. Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Have a good night, everyone. Have a great weekend.
Me too. Happy Easter.
Happy Easter all.
Oh, yeah. Same. Bye-bye.